I do, I do.
No, you're good. You're totally okay.
Yes.
I feel like the part where I was there working on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He did like find your company.
I'm sure he said that.
He actually said that we really try to copy that. But that was it. Like it wasn't, it was songs with, like, decided that people were wondering this. The tape was.
Oh.
Papa Dackey?
Yeah, obviously a girl.
Papa Dackey?
You've called me sometimes. Yeah, so my voice is very good. And when you call me, I'm like, oh, I'm calling you. I can never think of someone else who's supposed to be causing this.
I know. Someone else, like, no one. A lot of people, like, on their phones.
So about to take your phone.
It's just like. Oh, yeah. I can't get off. She's special. We got a picture of the week because the girl is. So. Yes. Oh, okay, so.
It looks like it should work, right?
Oh, I don't. Yeah.
Yeah. I'd point something more. So what? Right?
This is nice. Yeah, I love it.
Oh. Oh, yeah, I don't know if I see you now. I'm sorry, my bad. It's. 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 Yeah, fine.
Good evening, everyone. Pardon the tardiness. We have a board president that is trying to find cellphone service while on personal leave. And so he's now to a truck stop. I think it's gonna work. And so we've also just left an executive session. Really thank you for the new batteries in my car. So we're, it's time to take a summer break, quite frankly. Give us just two more minutes and then we will call Mr. Russell Holtz in on the phone.
No, we need to get tomorrow. Yep. Now, now, like, we're gonna start greasing wheels. My goal, like, never. Or, not start getting greased, but then getting ready for next year. Yeah, put it to those hands. I'm sorry. All I ever want.
All right, Mr. President, I think we are ready to try to do this remote thing. You can see us on YouTube as well as all the other online visitors. If you wouldn't mind calling the meeting to order, sir.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Neal. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And we will start with a roll call vote. Roll call, roll call, and then.
Austin.
Hi.
Ellie Warren.
Here.
Hudson.
Here.
Russell.
Here. Okay. This evening, Dr. Neal, do we have any special guests doing the pledge allegiance at a moment of silence?
We don't see our boy scouts here this evening. I'll be glad to leave the pledge allegiance, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to their land, the United States of America, and to the free public, for which it stands. Foundation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal. Now, if the members of the public please observe a moment of silence. I would appreciate that very much. Thank you, Mr. President. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Neal. And thank you for everyone who's attending this evening. We have a motion for the approval on the agenda, please.
Don't move.
Second. Roll call.
Austin.
I'm.
Ellie Warren.
I.
Addison.
I'm president.
I'm. All right, we will move directly into public comments. I have the. Want everyone to know that they should please be aware that any personal or individual student matters are considered confidential under Colorado law. And it is out of respect for the law and our employees and students. And we require those discussions to take place privately in an executive session. It is requested that individual comments be limited to five minutes or a total of twenty minutes for a particular topic. The intent of public comment is to skip the board of education the opportunity to hear your comments. However, the board will make no decisions nor take any action on public comment during the meeting. No. Dr. Neal.
Mr. President, we have eleven members to give a public comment this evening. And so we'll go just the old paper style. There's something, you didn't see, Ms. Lindsay Paul is out this evening. She's normally our digital guru that's helping us pull things together, so back to paper. Thank you for signing up. Mr. Nate Owen is first. And, Mr. Nate, you would approach the podium. And then after Nate will be Ashley Norton. After Ashley Norton will be Jamison Deon. And then after Jamison Deon will be Bill Brown. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Dr. Russell, Dr. Neal, Mr. Russell Holtz, and Board of Directors. My name is Nate Owen, and I am here as the representative of WPEA and the teachers of Warden Park School District. So I would like to share with you guys some of the updates from the end of the school year. And so here I give you guys a little bit of a WPEA report. And so we felt, after talking to Dr. Neal, that this was the most appropriate place in the agenda for just giving you a little bit of information about how the end of the school year went. So first off, I would like to thank the Board of Directors for their representation at the meeting for a process with the teachers. We had a very positive work through session through a couple of different timeframes. One of, or a couple of things that we worked through was language in the conditions of employment for the employees for both classified and certified staff. We worked together and collaboratively, we worked diligently with our central office staff, the Board of Education, and several teachers that were at the large circle. And we worked hard at, at working for a raise for all employees in the school district. I want to commend you guys and commend the executive office staff and the teachers that worked so diligently and collaboratively for getting for that. So thank you for that. Couple of things that I'd like to report. I know that as a teacher of eleven years, I do know that there is no tired like the end of the school year tired. That is just one of those things that every teacher knows that the end of the school year is teacher tired. And it is just exhausting. I know that my teachers or my staff, my, not my staff, but my colleagues, my staff that I work with, I had a very strong end of the school year, especially the last three weeks when we pushed through. We worked diligently. The students showed a lot of perseverance. They showed a lot of resilience. They showed a lot of academic tenacity where they really worked hard to try to finish out the school year strong. I know that even as the school year comes to a close, teachers don't always have the end of the break here. I know that the common notion is that teachers get the summer off, but in all reality, we don't. We still have a job to do, still work tirelessly through the summer. It is a different kind of work because we're no longer directly working with students, but we're definitely preparing for students. Even this week, we've been working on some curriculum over a few days where we have reflected on the lessons that went well and worked on how to improve the lessons that did not go as planned. We made sure that the standards that we are teaching in our classrooms are aligned with the Colorado Department of Education using actual data that we collect in our classrooms. We want to make sure that we are aligned with what best practices are. A lot of teachers, like myself, exhibited growth mindset. Throughout the summer, we all tend to work on making these lessons better, but also do a little bit of reading and work on our own. In fact, this morning, I was reading a book by Smith, Gill, and Sharon, which is actually one of the most renowned math teacher preparation books. And I was just reading the foreword on it. And there was a quote in there by Dan Meyer. For those of you that are not math teachers, if you don't know Dan Meyer, he is one of the most renowned math educators out there. He is one of the leaders of Desmos, which is an online platform from the, that is used most commonly as a graphing calculator, but it also has a lot of other capabilities. But he has a lot of things. One of the quotes that I was really struck by this morning when I jumped down these words. And he said, "We work with math students, composites of mathematical ideas and the students' identities as people. The practices for orchestrating mathematical discussion in the classroom and putting these practices into action develop and sustain their belief that both math and students matter." This book will help you learn to walk along that path. And so it's one of those teachers understand that it's content that matters, but it's also the students. And so as a teacher myself, and I know many of my colleague teachers, using professional development during the summer, we stand by these words that we are not only preparing ourselves to be better content deliverers, but better deliverers to our students because it is the students that do matter. And so with that being said, I just wanted to share some of the thoughts from WPEA and the teachers as we head into the summer, so thank you for allowing me to have some time to share with you guys.
And I couldn't quite tell if as a teacher he was, had flip flops on or not, but he's definitely wearing shorts. A little bit envious this evening. Mr. Russell Holtz, do you have something to say? He just came off of you.
I just wanted to say, hey, for working together and working, no, just for working up forward and thanks to that presentation, Bob, status of the Teacher's Association.
Thank you, sir. We have Ashley Norton. Please approach the microphones. Jamison Deon following on deck. Bill Brown. And then Lisa Mullin following that.
Hello, I am Ashley Norton, and I am coming to you tonight to speak as a parent and a former employee of WPSD about our vision, mission, and strategic plan. Prior to working in this district, I taught for nine years in Texas. And within this district, I taught from August 2016 until June 3rd of this year. I taught social studies, live on level, and A and P classes, as well as being an advisor of a leadership student council organization and PLC facilitator. My family is leaving the district to move to another state. On our district website, the mission statement of WPSD is a place of becoming. Honestly, I don't know what we are becoming. Are we becoming a school district of the vision that cannot be bridged? Are we becoming a district of the board's way or no way? Are we becoming a district rampant with fear and intolerance? Our district's mission statement is to embrace a culture where all learners are empowered to pursue intellectual, personal, and collective excellence. The definition of embrace is to accept or support willingly and enthusiastically. And empower is defined as to make someone stronger and more confident. Based on the mission statement, the students are at the center of what WPSD should filter all decisions through. You have heard from numerous WPSD learners that they enjoy the classes that make them think beyond themselves. And yet the perception of the public was the civil disobedience class, which as an elective course, was underscripted by the board for possible controversial topics, even though it follows district policy. There have been statements made by the board that have made students feel less than. There are students who are wanting to speak with the board about their experiences within this district, who are afraid to because they have read and heard comments or seen behavior that makes them feel worried about the possible repercussions by the board. Is that empowering embracing our WPSD students? Are students of WPSD who need to compete with their peers in the work sector, an institute of higher learning, and/or the military? They will be competing with thousands of others' replacements within these aforementioned areas. Is the board empowering them with their actions? Are we funding appropriately like for theater, band, fire, forensics, art, CTE courses such as welding, culinary arts, and computer science, athletic programs, and facilities? I have seen multiple grants written, GoFundMes, and other fundraisers run by sponsors and students just to keep supplies available, fees paid, the programs to stay afloat, and be able to compete at higher levels, including purchasing equipment and food for events students have to travel to. Are we being fiscally responsible and preparing our students for their futures? Do students and their programs have what they need? Our district's strategic plan uses language such as fostering an exceptional, positive, and empowering work environment from discussing optimizing educator talent. The educators of this district, if we were to rate the Board of Directors as individuals, say they have upheld that plan. Also in the district strategic plan, it states under the academic success section that students will have all opportunities and choices available as they move through our district and beyond. I find it important to save the key phrase, "will have all opportunities and choices again." By possibly cutting courses that students enjoy that might have controversial topics or limit the students' access to knowledge through courses and experiences that you might not find personally valuable and are not funding programs the best that you can or as a board of holding this statement. I am afraid of what is to come for this district if the bar of empowering embracing all the WPSD students is not upheld and it is not figured out what we are becoming. My son, who is a student at Columbine Elementary, asked why people hate teachers. We, of course, had a conversation about the topic, and it came to light that occurred on the playground from his peers that there are people in the community that hate teachers. He, of course, was disheartened because he wants to be a science teacher, and he doesn't want to be hated. This is through the eyes of an eight-year-old. An eight-year-old who still believes in Santa Claus and the truth fairy. What is happening in this district is seeping into the lives of small children. I wish I had an opt-out forum for that conversation with my son. What are we becoming? There is been a divide in our community that is continuing to grow. I am suggesting focusing on what can be done for the WPSD students to achieve a locked mission statement on our website. Dig into what can be done by evaluating the actions and decisions based on the strategic plan to support our students, our staff, and our families of WPSD rather than our own personal politics and beliefs because the world, the word "all" means even the residents of WPSD who didn't vote for you. I challenge you to start building bridges because all students deserve that of us. I challenge you to start building bridges because all students deserve that trust. I leave you with this. It has been my pleasure and honor to serve the students and families of Willimpar High School for six years. I have found an administration who is supportive and encourages us to be our best selves every day. I have found colleagues who have become family to me. I have had students who have made me a better educator. I have had families of students rally around me in times of joy and in times of my deepest sorrow. I will miss each of them. I hope that all stakeholders mentioned will hold the board and each other to the standard of embracing and empowering all students of WPSD, as they are our most cherished gift in this group. To my students, demand better of yourself and this group. When you face hardship, put your hands on your hips, lift your chin, and say, "Watch me." I don't feel that my work is done here, but my dad always told me that my work is done when I'm dead. So I will continue to work for students as they pursue their goals and dreams, because that is truly who I work for, the students. Thank you.
Bill Brown. Lisa Mullin.
In 2021, voters elected conservatives to school board throughout Colorado. It was part of the nationwide referendum on the amount of control and visibility parents have with their children's education. Board meetings in most of these districts have since been volatile. What we've seen in the Willimpar School District is no exception. I have submitted over 35 core requests in the last two months with the goal of providing parents a window to see what is actually happening within the walls of Willimpar School District. I learned that we've been lied to. Systemic racism, CRT, and gender fluid trading is present in the district. Principals and other administrators have been involved with an active cover-up to keep our parents in the dark. The Willimpar Education Association has claimed in the past they are not part of the national improvement group, and they're just here to cite the address of all teachers. This, too, I've discovered is a lie. Some of this information is being released this evening. All will be released in time. The parents in our district deserve to know the truth. In an email released through Cora, written January 12, 2022, the vice president of WPEA wrote this to a union member. Quote, "The most important piece is that we continue to have teachers, whether part of the WPEA or not, attend these meetings. It is the only way to continue to hold the board accountable its time, though we are working closely with the PPEA for other methods of disruption." Let me repeat that quote. "We are working closely with the PPEA for other methods of disruption." He later notes, "We have not set out mass communication on members about WPEA leadership's often been duly enlightened to the board as steps we consider taking since the election." There are a few reasons for that. I may have to discuss those outside of the email. The organized disruption by the WPEA is evident in other emails. Shortly after the school board voted to approve the AMU for Merit Academy, the WPEA treasurer sent emails to members asking the district to email to all staff that read, "With the support of the Pike Peak Education Substitution and Colorado Education Substitution Legal Department, we're pursuing legal avenues to address these actions." A series of legal and public disruption effort followed in an attempt to halt the Merit Academy chartering process under the guise of open beating law violations, much like what was observed in Douglas County and other places. An email that early in the next month to all staff announced reoccurring Friday afternoon collaborative meetings at the home of the WPEA treasurer, in which the union would provide food and drinks. Just last week, the president of the WPEA blasted emails all high school staff when the civil disobedience course, which does contain CRT material, but we'll get to that in a little time, made it onto the school board's agenda. Predictably, staff and some of the usual opponents of the school board showed up to the meeting and toe the company line in yet another act of disruption. The disruption of the Willimpar School Board meetings matches the EPA playbook, summed up in a blog post on their website entitled, "How to oust the right-wing school board." The dramatic and fierce opposition this board has encountered is not at all a gift. The parents and the voters in this district are being lied to. The core results validating the claims of this speech will now be distributed to the board. I promise, there's more to come. I'm one in agreement.
Bill Brown. Lisa Mullin. And Patricia, and I can't pronounce her last name, I apologize. We'll be after Lisa Mullin. Paula Mike, Kidney Walker. Yes, sir.
Excuse me. Dr. Neil, would you go ahead and start it, please? I chose not to say anything for the first minute of my time here this evening. In all honesty, I expect that this board will have heard just as much during my minute of silence as you will while I am actually speaking, because you have made it clear that you are not listening to people and what they have to say. Nevertheless, I am going to share three issues with you tonight. One, you keep characterizing those of us who oppose you as anti-merit academy. This simply is not true. Are there people who have been speaking that did not want merit in our district? Well, of course, there are. And we know the truth of that, that many, including myself, who have stood before you. And there are many others who are in the community that oppose you, not because of merit academy, not because of school choice. As a matter of fact, many of us support school choice. We simply disagree with the way merit has been approved and those who are being hurt in the process of accommodating merit. Similar to my first point, you constantly claim that there is a small liberal minority that are the only ones who object to the manner in which you are running our school district. This is also untrue. There are many individuals in our community, including many teachers, who are considered conservative by any traditional definition of the word, and we are opposed to you. To be clear, these people are conservatives, and they are disgusted with the unethical way this board has gone about doing its business. Again, to be clear, there are many of us. We are conservative, and we are opposed to this board. Three, at these board meetings, we have heard comments, and I expect to hear more tonight, from individuals who are connected to Merit Academy about horrible things that have been said about them. About merit students who have been confronted because they belong to that school. And to be really honest with you, that breaks my heart. No student should have to deal with that. And I agree that merit students and staff have to deal with this type of behavior. Likewise, I know of instances where individuals, both adults and students, who are connected to merit, that have been disrespectful to students and staff from our district elementary schools, from Willimpar Middle School, and from Willimpar High School. Indeed, I've had some of those comments directed at me because I teach at Willimpar High School. This behavior is also wrong and should not be tolerated. Now, what is the piece that is common to all of this behavior? It is the fact that members of this board are the ones who have modeled this behavior through their actions, through their demeanor, through their attitudes, and by doing so, are encouraging people to behave their way. People are doing what you have modeled for them. And I simply implore you tonight to stop modeling this behavior. Quit dismissing and demonizing those who disagree with you. Work at hearing what they have to say and honestly consider their questions and concerns. Maybe then, we can return to being a community who treats everyone, merit, and other schools with respect and dignity.
We have Lisa Mullin, Patricia, Kidney Walker, and then following this, Walker is Sean Teckrom.
Today, I understand here is our concern here. I, too, have some of the aforementioned emails that we received through Cora to discuss with you. My unfortunate topic is the very controversial line of critical race theory and such other ideologies. I believe we have been lied to, and this has been promoted even at the highest level of this district from the administration down to some teachers, based on the emails that I have here. Email packet number one, from March and April of 2021, consists of a discussion between the administration, principals, and other staff of the district about interest in the attendance of a series about systemic racism and promoting equity in schools. This free series was focused on the attendance of leaders who can influence, educate, and enact district policies. There was also discussion of forming an equity team for the district. You will see comments of staff eager to not only be a part of this, but to enact teams to push this on for our children. The same argument against CRT being taught in our schools can be applied to teaching systemic racism or things like diversity, equity, and inclusion. Our schools cannot embrace an ideology that is damaging to our students' intellectual and emotional growth. These ideologies require students to see themselves not as individuals, but as representatives of some predetermined group, such as an oppressor or oppressed group. Email packet number two that I have consists of emails within the district as well. Apparently, someone questioned the board of directors, and I have to make note that this was prior to the last election. So most of you, including our superintendent, probably isn't aware of that. But the question that was posed is whether or not a school or a teacher in the district was using the 1619 Project or Critical Race Theory. These emails refer to this concerned parent or citizen, we don't know who he or she is, as the complainer. You will read comments of staff who support CRT and the 1619 Project, as well as similar ideologies. Some claim the 1619 Project was a good program. Another teacher added that they read a book called The Color of Law, which they admitted feeds into CRT. This same individual admitted that they hoped to bring the concept of both the book and the theory into their teaching. Has it been? We don't know. It's been a year. Another teacher admitted to have used a little bit from the 1619 Project. People who questioned the 1619 Project were referred to in these emails as education critics and right-wing zealots. The response by the administration to the board seems to make light of the actual responses of the staff to the question that was posed to them. CRT believes racism, for those who don't understand, believes racism is present in every aspect of life, in every relationship, and in every interaction. Therefore, its advocates look for it everywhere. In a school setting, this means teaching our children to think this way and obviously looking for it. They will learn to eventually call each other out and reject one another because tolerating racism is also considered one of racism. That would have to be discovered in staff. It's similar to the diversity, equity, and inclusion concept and the idea of systemic racism. In 1619 Project, it is a journalism piece. It's not really a curriculum. It's based largely on lies and mistruths that was labeled false by leading American historians who happen to be liberals. If we're going to go with parties there. It's not historically accurate curriculum. It pre-labels America as a racist, similar to the theories and ideologies mentioned earlier. Most parents that I have spoken to do not want their children educated on radical divisive ideology. And most teachers do not want to teach it. I know of you who have mentioned it as well. You have staff afraid to speak up over this. It may be a good idea to initiate some conversations with your staff on these topics. The new directors were in part elected based on your desire to prevent these radical divisive ideologies from our district and to represent us parents. I believe that is why in part you were targeted even prior to being elected. Parents want transparency and a say into whether kids are learning. Parents do have the right to say so in the education of our children in school, contrary to the belief of some who support these ideologies.
One minute.
I implore you to stand firm and not hand off your power. How can parents trust the district when we see this kind of correspondence and what else maybe they be lying about? Please investigate this. If this much is found on this topic in two email threads, how much is really out there? We don't have a problem with equality, and we're not racist. What we do have a problem with is socialist-inspired equity and radical divisive ideology. Our children are not inherently racist, as we learned. These theories and ideologies create racism and division instead of like skills and respect. You, as board of directors, are what stands between our children and these ideologies. Please continue to be strong for our children. And I just have to say, we have supported teachers our entire career, and I believe with all my heart that most teachers don't die into this. And thank you very much for your time. Do you want the emails?
Thank you for your comments. Kelly, who am I kidding? Patricia, Paula Mike, Kidney, and then Sean. And Eugene Harris will be after Sean.
Hello, my name is Patricia. This fall, we have a five-year-old entering kindergarten here in Willimpar. I'm here today because there's been a lot of back and forth in the quality of education teachers schools and what is being taught in Willimpar schools. To me, these findings of these working through building improvement foundation their parents have taken for self. They're perfecting habits, making fun, learning what makes people around them different and unique. They're hopefully getting better cheering and starting to learn more about their emotions, how to control their emotions, and how to learn their secrets. This foundation is critical for those who challenge progress in school and new innovations presented. And as they get older and experience the world around them, they're able to rely on that foundation to guide them towards what is wrong and right and what they need to make through a better place. Kindergarten is a foundational principle of core values and not divisive, one-sided thing about complex events and topics. When you are introducing extremely complex and divisive topics into their world, you are taking away their childhood and introducing them to a world of hate and evil. You are traumatizing these children from achieving the very evil needs that they will eventually want to get rid of. Instead of teaching each other as different things in court, kids should be taught that, yes, we're all different, but we're all unique. We are all necessary, and we all have a heart, and we all regret. That seems like common sense to me, and I hate that I even have to say this, but political propaganda that is divided country should not be taught in childhood and kindergarten. In 2021, a Willimpar kindergarten teacher from Columbine Elementary by the name of Peggy Wallace had an article published in the Colorado Sun titled, "The Elections, the Capital Tech, and the Black Lives Matter" come to a kindergarten classroom in rural Colorado. Peggy is part of TeachPlus, an organization that's guiding teachers to bring in divisive curriculum in schools. After reading about Peggy, about the books she reads in her class, about her intention, I realized Peggy and I probably forgot many things. That's the irony here. At the end of the day, most of us want what's right for our children or the world, which is their perception of what's right and wrong is so different. Although she claims her job is to awaken new generations of understanding and art, which she states through states and people of Willimpar, several times including the George Floyd stance and ignorance and hate that is rooted in Willimpar. She was also panelist in a podcast titled, "How to Teach Plus, the Insurrection." This is a kindergarten teacher. At first, she herself stated kindergarten children are just starting to realize the business of others, that they move beyond their egotistical nature. But then she continues to discuss all the extremely complex and divisive topics that she teaches in her classrooms. Imagine, I'm a five-year-old, and I'm just waking up to the real world, other kids, their families, and silently, silently, behind me, taught about hate, anger, and evil. How could a woman who has been a teacher for sixteen years give the appropriate content to children in kindergarten? Long story short, many parents complain about her controversial curriculum. I reviewed the emails that were sent between the principal, the director of HR, and the assistant superintendent. Their only concern was about how to address potential bad thoughts. Along with many complaints in the letter, it has been forward, which was published in Courier, and I echo what the questions that the writer raised. It instructs, "In instruction on BLM, social justice, voter suppression, combating ignorance, propaganda, and conspiracy, kindergarten curriculum." What are examples of not obvious segregation issue for a five-year-old about? As a social justice board teacher has admitted, presenting children with controversial political content, voted to employ their children's views on such matters, what actions have you taken to envelop the possibly inappropriate political doctrine to parent problems? The response I called by my elementary did not address the question and the extremely vague response without ever noticing it's truly become school.
Mr. Vice President, I must take issue. This is a personal matter. Her personal file is retained still under legal review, and I would defer to her attorney.
So why first? She still hasn't been played.
Can I get a attorney comment on this, please?
She's had a person in the right to speak about things that are made in the public. You hear from her.
I'm not going to take the issue. I'm not going to take the issue, but I appreciate advice. Mr. Vice President, how would you like to proceed here?
I'm done talking about it, by the way.
I was dealing with another recall, Mr. President.
No worries.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your flexibility.
Sure. As soon as a child enters kindergarten, it was a great exercise for me to go and review what the Colorado academic standards for kindergarten is or are. So, let's see. Here's what you can pay for the buying. Identify the major food groups to the benefits of eating a variety of foods. Recognize the relationship between emotions and actions. Something I haven't seen from most adults these past two years, and definitely something I haven't seen from most adult youth yet. Other things: math stuff, music stuff, science stuff, art stuff. And then we get the social studies. Ask questions and discuss ideas about paths. The sequence of events is important when describing paths. Recognize that geographic tools represent places and spaces. People live in different places around the world. Individuals make choices based on wants. Describe choices people make about how to use the money they earn. And then we get to understand that civic participation is placed in multiple groups and in various forms. Remember, this is kindergarten. They're talking about voting, debating, volunteering, protesting, but also practicing citizenship to courtesy, honesty, equity, and fairness in working with others. Also participate in making fair and reasonable decisions using democratic traditions. But again, kindergarten, we're talking about why rules are needed, how to create and follow rules, how class rules promote fairness. Again, this is kindergarten. Kindergarten messages, foundational principles, and core values, not divisive, one-sided, and complex events and topics. Let's work together to shape these kids' lives, but also look at children. Children need to be children.
Susan Walker, followed by Sean Peckron, followed by Jean Harris, followed by Latia, pardon me for this pronunciation.
Okay, so my name is Susan Walker. I'm president, co-owner of Warden Park. And I always like to open with prayer. So Heavenly Father, I thank you that your word is true. First Corinthians, chapter eleven, verse nineteen, says, "There must be division among you, for that is how the genuine are known." So, Father, I thank you that this board has demonstrated your word and shown it to be true in Jesus' name. So I'd like to talk about the division on the board and how this division has shown those that are genuine and are standing and doing what they ran to do. So there is a board member who voted against merit being chartered because he didn't have all his questions answered. I question why in six months he didn't have his questions answered. He gave fake news last week when he said that the results of the survey said that Warden Park community did not want the changes. The other board members found the survey and showed that this was false. That there was, I guess I would say, a tie for those that wanted it and those that didn't. There are other examples of this board member creating divisions or showing himself not unified with the other board members. So I just want to point out that those elected board members are doing what they ran to do. They are doing a good job, and they are showing themselves to be known as genuine. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments this evening, Mr. Peckron.
All right, I wasn't going to speak on this one subject, but I was sort of doing a presentation today earlier. So this is a letter to Dr. Neal.
Can you use the mic?
Use the mic.
Okay, so this is a letter of the mail to Dr. Neal in July of, let's see, July seven twenty-one, twenty-one, last summer. And I'll start with that. Greetings and welcome, Matthew. I hope you and your family are settled in and doing well in our beautiful community. So, I have just closed out the Rio Platform Training for the League. Now, I have just retired from Warden Park after coming from a year in the district. I am now officially concerned with the direction of the Warden Park School District and our leadership. As you know, yesterday's code word was equity. Now, this is in the training for the Summit Learning, which is called Rio at the high school. So it was equity across three sessions. So that was on Monday. Equity outcomes indicate Marxist leanings. I looked that up, just doing some research, and it was on the BLM, Black Lives Matter, which has Marxist leanings, and it was right there on the first page. So that was that very Monday. So I thought to myself, tomorrow's work. Equity outcomes indicates Marxist leanings, predictable from source. Today's code word, which is Tuesday, systemic racism. So the district is now officially embracing critical race theory. This fear among many parents in our county has now come to fruition. This concern was addressed to my wife by multiples of constituents while she was on the school board. She was assured that the Rio Platform Training was being, quote, "reviewed." This is still the letter, remind you. Linda Murray indicated the district, the Board of Education, that the district is not expanding the Summit Learning Platform. Yet, leadership at the high school and apparently at the central office has been pressuring teachers to take this training, so, quote, "all teachers are trained in Summit Learning." And I just learned on Sunday that our HR director sent out a march of last year, a directive that I think we should die on, alluded to earlier. The district's curriculum is supposed to reflect the values and desires of the taxpaying community. I believe that the Summit Learning Platform does not do this, but does the opposite. It is divisive and racism against the majority of our students. I am of the opinion that we should evolve, run away from the Summit Learning Platform or other programs with CRT Foundation during windows, not embraced or cultivated in our community. I would also maintain that the community needs to retain locus of control with importation of curriculum and exportation of student information and data to be stored, manipulated, and prosecuted by omnipotent entities of a select few tech companies. Shame on us for subjecting our students and community to this, quote, "platform." Okay, so now, my original thing was thanks, so I'm going to give thanks. Okay. Greetings. I come to die to express gratitude and thanks. I recently retired from WPSD. I would like to thank students, parents, and taxpayers for having been able to spend twenty-four years with the district. When I first came to the district, I thought I'd been dropped in the sound of music. But now, as the culmination of my career, it's more like a woke James Bond. Okay, I would specifically like to thank Directors Patterson and Dillyworth. Your steadfastness and perseverance in treacherous waters has been inspired. In your campaign, you told voters what you would do as members of the board and as board members, and have delivered for your constituents and community. Thank you to Gary Gravetto and Director Ellingworth. You are adamant about pay raises for staff. I am thankful for your efforts and that of our newly-elected school board for this historical benefit of WPSD.
One minute. In respect to your twenty-four years, thank you.
And this is for you. Superintendent Matthew Neal, thank you for the plethora of lessons I have learned from you. I've watched with deep kind of appreciation the way you have definitely used thousands of dollars of district monies on people who have done studies, passed them off as due diligence, and use these studies as tools to install and control.
Mr. Ellingworth, I would consider this your direction. I have the right to call for an executive session. If there's anything regarding my personnel evaluation, I would ask that executive session to be called if Mr. Peckron is going to continue to assail my character.
I'm just telling you what I am giving you the facts.
So facts, my personnel evaluation or...
Can I give you direction on that from speaking?
Matthew, how is this a personnel evaluation? He is personally claiming.
Yeah, that's how it knocks.
Silence! I'm preferring the comments about me to be a Russian pirate.
Should I put them, should I write to the newspaper then and put them in the newspaper as well? I would like to continue on here, but I can put it somewhere else. But I would like to continue here.
I would ask that the conversation about my personnel record would be skipped.
Waste of tax dollars? He's going on and on. It's an attack.
Ms. Morris?
This is...
Can you remain quiet? Are you going to be able to do that? Grabbing all the comments, we appreciate it. I've not received any legal advice from attorney about this in particular. Ms. Harvard, preference to provide something last week that I would not share with myself, I think you're having in your tour. Ms. Harvard, do you have anything you can communicate? Sounds like she wants to do that part of it. Thank you, Mr. Peckron, for the pause. You're welcome. Okay, right on me, David.
All right, how's the body now? Okay, upon legal consideration, we are going to allow speakers to continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Peckron?
How much time do you have?
About two minutes.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to continue giving thanks to Matthew. I'll start over. Thank you for the plethora of lessons I've learned from you. I've watched with deep kind of appreciation the way you have definitely used thousands of dollars of district monies on people who have done studies, passed them off as due diligence, and use these studies as tools to install and control the direction and merits and initiatives of our publicly-elected school board. I have noted the way you insulated yourself with central office staff to avoid responsibility or liability as if it is second nature. The way you have downplayed the force of work and views and initiatives as if they were yours and used them to advance your career, outstanding servant. Quietly applying for another job than when turned down, write a nice letter of loyalty to our staff and community espousing your newfound re-loyalty. Thank you for that reassurance. Remember when you squired Gary Gravetto around the high school, and then let him get teed up and basically be harassed by a student and a counselor at this next school board meeting after that? Then you did and said nothing to rectify the situation immediately. It took a while for you to rectify, and then you made Gary sound at fault by saying he was remorseful. At the next board meeting, classic. Then it was Director Ellingworth's turn, when he went to pick up his daughter Gateway. More agenda controversy, great tools for maintenance of the administration power structure. You let the damage sink in and gave no consequences to the parties that also reported this.
One minute.
My gratitude on that lesson as well. There are many more examples of things I have learned from and about Matthew in short time in the district. Thanks again. I would like to thank the small group of individuals who are trying to basically usurp the will of the vote by trying a recall. My thanks line and reminders, and the reminders you all have given me on the ridiculousness and uselessness of spending a hundred twenty thousand dollars of tax money on a recall during a potentially upcoming recession based on nothing, and thanks for nothing, actually. Lastly, I would like to thank a former school board member who never got recognized for the tremendous impact she had on the district. Dr. Gwen Peckron, who after serving on the WPS School Board, conceived and achieved the Tax Ballot Initiative 2016, paying off bonds, and delivering to stellar county schools fourteen million dollars approximately to date and counting. She never got any recognition for that. Fourteen million bucks in county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peckron, for your comments. Jean Harris, followed by Latia. And, yeah, can you say your last name, please? I can't. If you're still here.
Say your last name, Latia.
Latia.
Yes, ma'am.
Devinish.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Sorry about that. And then I've got Catherine Wheeler and Jonathan Wright, who close out the evening.
Go ahead, sir. Yeah, I just would like to have an action item expressed, where I look all of the, you know, the previous school board meeting, there was a bit of a peep law over censorship of books in our library. So I'm calling for the board to raise some of the books into this public forum so they can be reviewed by whoever wants to attend, and let's see what's in those books. Right here in front of there. The vision statement, I forget the exact title, but I think there might be those who can find us, says, you know, we're to here to embrace all, but it seems like we're promoting a few instead of embracing all of these schools. That's being done instead of teaching real life skills like reading, writing, math, something that's going to allow our students to succeed in the workplace instead of socially divisive topics. That's really not the place I would agree to be taught particularly, that we discussed in kindergarten racial and political. So just to hold dead your heads, it sounds to me like the WPA and some others have some strange food.
Thank you for your comments. Yeah, thanks for your patience on your last name pronunciation. I apologize. Go ahead.
Good morning, sir. Good evening, everyone. My name is Althea Devonish.
My name is Althea Devinish and I am a resident and have been a resident of this district for the last four years. As you can tell, I have a good accent. I'm an immigrant to this beautiful and wonderful country. A country to which so many people would like to come to and would like to be a part of this nation. I'm going off topic a little bit, but let me just say this. I have, I do mission work and I travel to many, many countries. And when people see me, they don't see me as an African American, they see me as an American. And they all want to come here. We have teams and the team, we have people from Germany, England, Chile, America, we have people from Belarus, Ukraine. And of all the countries that we represent, the people flock to the Americans and they all say, I want to come to America. So what I'm saying, you have a beautiful country. America's a very beautiful country and built upon such good foundation. And we've allowed the enemy to try to snatch and take our nation because of differences in color. God mayers some different colors. Which one of us will have a garden and in that garden have just white roses or red roses? When they have a garden, you want pink roses, red roses, azaleas, you know, different, different kinds of flowers because why? It represents God's variety. And so I'm here, I'm going off script, I guess, but I'm here to encourage us. We are beautiful people, America's beautiful. I came in this country and I got a scholarship. I was in a scholarship to help my school. My niece, the same thing happened to her and she's now a lawyer. So I'm saying there's so many good things if we were to place our emphasis on the good. But you know what? The devil is the one who brings the separation and division. If I, if my child was to get in an accident right now and his son or his daughter, you know, needs a heart and he can use my heart to give to his daughter and they have the same blood type, it will go to as well. So, so teaching critical race theory is wrong. We need to let people know how valuable they are. We are valuable despite of what the color of our skin, where we come from. I am proud to be born and to the day, right? Thank God, because God would be there. But I'm ever so proud to be an American. I am so proud to be here, I'm so proud to be a part of your legacy. So don't neglect that, you know, man is fallen and because of the fall of the sin of man, we have allowed race issues, we have allowed, you know, male and gender issues, we have allowed different things to come to separate us. But we are human beings and we are made in the image and likeness of God. And I just want to say, I've been off script a whole lot, but I just felt my heart, I like to speak from my heart. You may have a beautiful country, we are beautiful people. Yes, we might have different colors, different, you know, different nationalities, but we all came from somewhere in America. And we must stand and fight together to uphold this nation. And we must stand for our children, our children are our heritage. Our children are the ones who are supposed to come and take our place. So we need to spend time and impart our children the right virtues, the right morals, the right things. And, 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 you know, and to be, be a, be a good citizen, to be someone of, you know, who can live the dream. This is a country where there's freedom. You know, we need to go some jobs today, you know, to Eastern Europe, people walk there, they walk with their head, their heads down. They're not, you know, when they see me, they find that I'm, you know, I'm different because I stand, you know, and their thought achievements, God has made me. They don't know their charity, God has made them, so they all go down and they're not as, as we are here, they're not as free. Anyway, I just want to say, I just want to pause it with Dr. Martin, looking, you know, a few words that he said. He said, I have a dream that one day in Alabama, little black boys and black girls will be able to join hands with white boys and white girls as brothers and sisters. With this fear, we will be able to work together, to pray together, to struggle together, to go to jail together, to stand together for freedom. Knowing this, we will be free in Jesus' name. And when this happens and when we allow freedom to reign, then we will step in the ring from every village and every helmet and every state and every city. We will be able to spin up that day when all of God's children, black men, white men, Jews and Gentiles, Protestants and Catholics, will be able to join hands and sing in the voice of the old Hebrew scripture. Free at last, free at last, thank God almighty, we are free at last. God bless you, board, God bless you, God bless everyone here, and God bless America. Thank you.
Catherine Wheeler, followed by closing out with Jonathan Wright.
I was just signing in.
Thank you. The shortest public comment I'd get this year, so thank you. Thanks for signing in and thank you, while I've got it, uh, thank you for your service on the district accountability committee, so I appreciate that as well. Close evening, sir.
All right, that's a hard act to follow, someone who is very, very eloquent, someone who is very, very fast. I think I were prepared, uh, as soon as tonight, uh, I'll keep it. Very, very important goal, and I think all the work that you've done. I thank the school board for pushing forward on merit account. My children attend that school, I have a connection, a personal connection with merit economy. I love it, I'm so proud of the unity that we've achieved. And I believe that we will all benefit because there are some scary things waiting in these emails. I've got an opportunity to read them, to report them. And the more, more what I want to say to you is please do not allow anyone to remove hope from our children. One of the worst things that you can do to any person is take away their hope. If you tell certain children that they have a system rigged against them and that they will not succeed because the rules won't allow them to succeed because other people are going to keep them down, you will remove hope from that child. If you tell a child that they are guilty of collective racial guilt because of the sins of their ancestors and that they must carry that guilt and that, you will take away that child's hope. I believe in the spirit of the previous speaker, Hapier, I'd be listening to, that we can come together, we can realize it and dream. So I'm asking you, board, uh, please read what's in those emails, understand that it is divisive, it is dangerous, and it will take away the hope from our children. Thank you.
I apologize for my texting this evening, I'm trying to keep up with Mr. Russell Holtz on the road while also I keep things going. Mr. Russell Holtz, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
That is the end of public comments, sir.
Okay, then we are on to Governor number six, word executive expectations.
Sorry, I think there's one more right before that consent agenda, sir.
Okay, consent agenda was not the very heart of the whole agenda.
No, sir.
Okay, let's continue on the consent agenda then. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda count?
So moved.
Second.
On a second.
Second.
You received a motion and a second, sir.
I heard, uh, will call vote.
Hi.
Hello, everyone?
Hi.
How's it going?
I'm good.
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 Aye. Thank you. Now we're on to Governor number six, word executive expectations, information and action.
Just one minute while I organize my notes.
Thank you, Governor.
I also wanted to give some feedback that audio apparently for people streaming is.
This is what happens when Mr. Tull comes on vacation. Kelly, any ideas for audio? Trying to speak louder, absolutely. Nathan Howard, is your audio on?
I hear it very well.
Were you able to hear the? Tina, Brian, if you could come to the podium, please.
Same thing again, David.
Were you able to hear?
Yes, I was. I was. But now I'm sitting here in Alamo.
Nathan, are you listening to the audio?
No, I, I just hear the, you hear audio and the camera is very, very fuzzy, it's not, uh, focused yet. So I am not saying that it's suggested, I don't hear the sound.
I know some miles is left when he returns. Sorry, the members in the public that are online, that's about all I can do at this time. We do have, still have seats available in the audience if you'd like to hop on over and join us. This evening, members of the board, we have a unique executive limitation policy and the point that is voiced is really from a, from a legal standpoint, that we as a district will not provide, will not allow unlawful or imprudent practice within the district. And you could extrapolate or spread this out from Sean Gully standing in the back of the room as safety and security to our financials, to our academics. And the statement that I simply provide is we are not under current litigation for the responsibilities of staff. So an example would be our audit was received without findings. We don't have any illegal activities either being pursued or having concluded during this year. Neither do we have the same for HR, neither do we have the same for anything related to student services. And so this is a really short affirmation that we are not under unlawful, unethical or imprudent practices at this time. And that's about the shortest EE that we could have done for the entire year. If you have any specific questions or illustrations, we'd be happy to try to address those. Obviously with Mr. Garrett out this evening for personal reasons as well as Mr. Tull, they're both on a much needed break. So I can try to answer things on every half.
Are there any questions, Governor Neal?
I do know also, I talked with Marcy Palmer today and we have also no due process filed against the district this year. Probably that's the first time they do here, right? With special education.
Thank you, Tina. Hearing none, if you wouldn't, unless there was one that I missed, if you wouldn't, if you wouldn't mind evaluating on your EE eight?
Do I have a, Dr. Neal, I need a motion to accept the information that you just read.
You are correct, I stepped over too far.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, second.
Second.
Will call.
Um, can?
I. Hi.
How's it going?
I'm good.
Good.
Aye. Now you can continue with that, Dr. Neal.
Uh, sir, Kelly is going to answer Mr. Ellinger's direct question.
Dr. Neal, do I need one more?
Just one moment, please.
Yeah, the camera is here is very blurry, it's just hard to see what's going on.
All right, members of the board, if I could take a moment of leisure as the fine gentleman standing before you is going to complete his. Brian, is this your seventh budget?
Eleven.
Eleventh budget, thank you. Let me try this one, sorry. This evening, before we begin, I'd like to introduce a new valued member of our staff as just having been approved, Leanna Tally's application and credentials. She is our new executive director of business services. Ms. Tally is a certified public accountant with a license number listed here that I can give you. I don't know if those things are confidential or not, so. She does have her Series Seven Securities Life Help and Long Term Care Insurance licenses. She has a master's degree in accountancy from Colorado State University. She is trading places with Mr. Gustafson, who is moving to her town in Polk College while she moves here to Woodland Park. But her husband is a graduate of Woodland Park Schools. And so it's great to welcome them back to the Woodland Park community. She has previously been a controller, assistant controller for a very enviable O'Dell Brewing Company and to which Brian and she have already compared notes on what he has for brewery tours up in Polk College, but I'll leave that private. She's a director of finance and accounting for Tandem Select, a company which I knew previously as well. She's a controller at University of Northern Colorado Foundation. And quite frankly, she went through two rounds of searches and she kept raising to the top. And our staff are super excited to have her with us. She will have students in our system, so not only are we paying her, but she's also helping pay us for the students she's bringing, which is great. And it is, it's great to have these two be able to do this work for these weeks of transition. So welcome very much, Anna. And Brian, thank you as well for bringing her into your world during this time of transition. Brian is absolutely losing sleep trying to pack his family up and head out of town. And so it doesn't, it's not easy to have the new person show up in your final two, three weeks while you're trying to close things out and officiate the public hearing this evening that he's about to do. So welcome, Anna, and Brian, thank you as well for your tutoring and your help for her members of the board. Just a quick reiteration, welcome, and you're upgrading with accounting smarts and about eighteen thousand dollars. Good stuff there. And Anna and I will, will be working through some things, but also. Brian, would you give that the eighteen thousand dollars? I had a couple looks in the audience. So each student raised about nine thousand dollars. Spoken well by the CFO. Uh, yeah, well, we talked about that two weeks ago, heard people raise about nine thousand two hundred dollars for people. So it is good to hear about more students looking into this. So that's exciting and we'll be not only connected here often on June, but as we move through the school year as well, it's kind of a, it's, I guess, always, always moving cycle. It's always tied back to the previous fiscal year while we can head to the next fiscal year, while you're in the current fiscal year. So we'll be connected and the staff here is excited with these developments. We're going to talk about the budget for adoption tonight. Now, this is a continuation of two weeks ago when I gave the proposed budget to the Board of Education. And a lot of the big details, where people rate, how we make money, how we spend money, those kinds of things. So I don't want to rehash a lot of things. I'm going to move on to the actual document a little bit after just reminding on some of the assumptions and then why we do this. And when I get into the document, I'll refer by page, you know, hit the document up here on the screen and talk about that. But just. But just, just to refresh, remind ourselves, this is our fiscal plan to allocate resources to support what we're doing in the district. And that's based on a vision, these strategic objectives as they're stated. So we have to have that in mind all the time as we're going to implement the budget. And it allows us to organize, control our spending based on what we project right now for expected revenues and expenditure. But the great thing about school budgeting, it also has a flexibility component. And we have the opportunity up until January thirty first of this fiscal year, so that'd be January thirty one, twenty twenty-three, to amend the budget or revise the budget based on the real information that comes through with regards to enrollment, the economy, etc. So this budget does provide those guardrails, does allow that flexibility, and also sets aside contingencies for the worst case scenarios. And so that's the why, the why we do things. It is our roadmap. Just a quick jump back to, I think, in January, as I talked to the board about our district fiscal. And so I just want to reiterate that this budget is based on a very strong, sound financial situation. We talked back in, I think it was EE eleven, it was EE eight, I think it was EE eleven. Well, I'm trying to remember exactly. About our fiscal situation, financial receivers. And we're strong, our asset sufficiency ratio, that's often our assets and our debts. And that's stable and I'm not going to go through all of these, but I just want to show you that we're well above the benchmark and that ratio is set by the Office of the State Auditor. Same with our debt burden ratio. We have very little debt. We don't have any real technical debt because of the sales tax issue that was mentioned earlier. We refunded six point seven two five, I believe, mils with property taxpayers in the district back in twenty sixteen to seventeen. So we eliminated debt at that time and reduced property taxes at that time. So now all we have are annually appropriated obligations in the form of support of participation. So our debt burden ratio is very stable, very good. Our operating reserve ratio actually is extended positive as is operating margin ratio. Those to deal with are permanent. And these numbers come from the Office of State Auditor as of fiscal year twenty one, autumn. That's the end of twenty twenty, twenty-one. These numbers won't be available for this year until next year. So Leanna will get to talk about those. And we have, we actually increased our reserves in fiscal year twenty one. While the plan was to spend them down coming out of the pandemic, actually increased those. And that's the same, similar story as far as fiscal year twenty-two, where we covered almost a half year with reserve. Now, we're going to use those for a little something, a lot of times. Also, we add about five cents to our reserves for every, how we spend, for every dollar we collect right now in revenue. And that's a healthy operating margin ratio. So I just wanted to show you that we're in good shape and getting ready to talk about a forty-two million dollar budget. And these numbers are updated a little bit from what I shared a few weeks ago in that we, we made sure to get an additional grant in that we didn't have information on two weeks ago. And we made sure to provide some additional and updated assumptions with regards to facility use agreement and our charter school that's moved to the district, how that might look financially. And we did adjust a couple of apartment budgets that got some data information. So there are some changes, or you received these on Friday and I posted them online Friday as well. So you have these numbers in front of you. Remember, when we're talking about the budget, we usually talk about the general fund. And that's the main operating auto money, about thirty-three million dollars. And the other funds, some of which are sub-funds to the general fund, I won't get into all that. The other funds have released some risks and taking care of all of our insurance and our deductibles and things like food service, self-rescribe, we'll talk about that a little bit later. Grants, those all have a specific purpose. The internal accounts at our schools are called people activity funds, the driver transportation fund. And as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, we are creating a new capital projects fund to prioritize and initiate the results of the facilities master plan. Okay, so just a quick reminder, on the assumption that we're going into this particular document, we're going with the same set values this year, twenty-two, or is actually December twenty-one of this fiscal year. And without knowing exactly where that's headed in August, we'll start with that number and then Ms. Tally can amend that, adjust that, revise budget mid-year as she gets that information. Uh, we're operating on the assumption that we'll have two thousand two hundred seventy-nine and a half on the people's in the district. So one hundred and seventy-five more than the current year. Remember, that's with the addition of three hundred and fourteen hundred people to our charter school academy. And as I talked about, this is under the assumption of nine thousand one hundred and twenty dollars per people there. Also a significant increase over the previous year. We talked about the budget stabilization factor last time. That's really where our budget is being assisted greatly and that the state of Colorado has reduced its offsetting factor for next year. And we also talked about the primary assumption in this budget as well is that we have chartered a new school, Mary Cadman, for the fall. And since the last time I talked, we now have a facility use agreement. And so, as I mentioned, that has some adjustments in the budget as well. And I just want to point out, as we talk about enrollment, it can get confusing. And there's really three types of enrollment to talk about. I'm going to try and stick as much as possible to funded people count. But what this illustrates is that the funded people count, as I mentioned before, is based on a five-year average, which is where the planning enrollment district. And we get funded, as you can see, at a higher level for that count than we do for actual students, which is here in the end. That's the sort of helpful feature of the Colorado School Funding Formula. And it allows the easing of the burden, the easing of the pain of a significant enrollment drop. Next year, we expect our total headcount in the district to be two thousand sixty-six. Okay, over six schools. This blue column, that's the number of those two thousand sixty-six that we actually get funded for. Okay, some students are abs students, homeschool students, classified differently. It's a pretty exact science and a lot of different accounting that goes on with buildings. It comes in in October and we expect that number to be just under two thousand funded people and just next to it. That goes into a formula that helps generate this number and we expect to be funded at that morality. But that just illustrates it. We're talking enrollment. You hear that a lot, you look it up, say, well, the district lost this May or they had eighteen hundred. And anything can get confusing. Are you talking headcount, FTE, or funded people count? There really worth to stick with funded people counts now. So board, if you have questions, please chime in, whether I'm talking about one of the district counts or whatever question you have actually. Okay. Now, in your practice, you have the budget for adoption. I'm going to go through a few of the pages, put some highlights and I'll put the budget up here. So I'll show you my notes. I'll show you the budget. I know it's hard to see, sorry, but it is online. And then there are always some updates that I'll post online as well. All right, if you look at page two, you should see the pages at the bottom after the cover page, definitely assessed for the public notes. Okay, page two is what we talked about last. Our funded people situation, where we saw the declining enrollment trend that we had despite of kindergarten funding a few years ago, despite of charter school funding that's coming here. And those are going to be interesting to monitor over the next few decades as we look past you. And then the per people rate that I talked about, it's headed up over nine thousand dollars for the first time in this history. Yeah? Sorry. What are you, what are you looking at? Ben, it's still page two. Oh, you don't have an error in that, that particular. The updated one is online with the Mary Caddman. So we'll get there. All right, on page three, I do want to talk about page three a little bit down at the bottom. And board members, you have a new page three. And you have the yellow sheet, which you got Friday. Okay, we made a couple of adjustments, but I just appropriate and found that you needed to. Make sure we corrected the assessment grade that's in that area. Now, when you approve the budget, you're not, this is the supplemental information. You're approving the dollars behind it. Okay, down at the bottom, it talks on page three about our assessment rate being six point nine five percent on that issue. And that will go into the new document. And that's the residential assessment thing. So as a taxpayer, myself, I take my three hundred thousand dollar home and I'm going to pay my six point nine five percent assessment rate on twenty-eight, just over seven mils of tax the district is levying next year. That's going to be about five hundred ninety-five, five hundred ninety-six dollars in property tax that I'm contributing to the district. And so that's what this page talks about, the accident five hundred and sixty. Uh, it's important to note that the partial assessment rate is still twenty-nine percent. And so it's significantly higher. On that same thirty-three hundred thousand dollars of market value, the business will pay about two thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars in tax. So those are the updated numbers there at the bottom of that narrative with regards to assessment. Another thing important to note, that's going to change a lot in the next two years. Uh, the legislature, the governor signed into law, a new Senate bill that's going to keep adjusting these assessment rates, particularly for residential. And there will even be an additional, or I guess, a recursory credit for residential property owners coming in twenty-four. And so that's going to get pretty confusing. I didn't want to put it all in here. And we're working with Leanna, the accounting successor, accounting treasurer, so they can really make sure that they understand how that's going to impact us. Maybe the second half of next year, but definitely in the twenty-two, twenty-three. Right now, we're working off of that six point nine five percent down from seven point five percent. Okay, now, it's important to remember too, that we're required to raise our middle levy by middle each year. And so as that assessment rate's going down, we're raising our middle each year. But that's going to do next year as a net effect of about five dollars. So pay about five dollars more than I would with the current setup. So you have one part in the current mix. So kind of interesting, those are working against each other. They're kind of at a pretty high level, but that's pretty confusing stuff. So all of that. Additionally, on page four, you can see the sales tax impact and that certainly impacts our taxpayers in Brooklyn. But also folks that drive through and spend money here in the Woodland Park Schools. And that's an updated charter sales tax question through the month of March. We usually receive that about two months. So you can see the orange line here for twenty twenty-one, size twenty twenty-two moving through this fiscal year is higher, probably about five percent higher this year for us than it was last year. Last year was a really big one, about fifteen percent higher than the previous. So moving along really well with collecting taxes. Our estimate next year is a little slower. I keep saying that. Don't mind that stuff. That's pretty well in hand. Uh, but we're expecting probably more of a, kind of more and more of a three percent increase in sales tax, potentially after five hundred and fifty. You look at page six. At the top of the page, it talks about some of the variables that impact the budget that we're monitoring pretty consistently. Things like rising inflation, big on everybody's mind, right? Other items like parasolons. I don't know if you follow this, but the Parasol, the Public Employees Retirement Association, which the public employees, like teachers and staff members at schools, contribute for pension after they retire. And it's struggled with getting itself to a point where it's considered solvent for the future. So they've got a plan in place where they continue to increase not only the employer obligation and contribution annual, but also employee contribution. So those will continue to go up. Next year, our employees are going to be paying about eleven percent of their income into that pension. And the district will be contributing twenty-one point four percent on top of the savings into the EDA. Okay, so that's something we continue to monitor as that obviously is a rising cost. Legislative impacts are always something interesting to monitor. You never really know what you're going to get. You can usually count on, there are going to be some legislators that try and impose ideas for a new public student formula, a finance formula. But pieces of it may be adopted and other pieces usually go away because of the complexity. Okay, but it's always interesting to notice those. And as I just talked about, some property taxes may go up, assessment rates may go down. We have to figure out how all of that impacts school from a pretty consistent basis. And then strategic planning. Things to think about as we're building, not only this budget, but future budgets, what's the strategy, what's the vision, what's the plan? And how will that be implemented when? So that's something that we'll have to continue to, to monitor and weigh in on to get into the fall. At the bottom of page six and onto page seven, we talk about stimulus funding. That's the federal COVID stimulus funding. And I'll note, I'll just have you take a look at those bullets, not on page six, top of page seven. And those are how we plan to spend our ESTR dollars. That's the COVID relief funds that will be with the district through September of twenty twenty-four. And the District Accountability Committee was great in contributing ideas, thoughts, feedback, and being listened to basically over the last two years on how to spend these dollars. So things like, things like addressing learning losses, the biggest and most primary focus of using those ESTR funds. We have to figure out a way to address the learning loss by students so that they cannot pay them back in the in-person. Fortunately, we were a district that had a lot of in-person learning at that time, but it's still something that's impacted next year. And making sure that we have remote learning supports, we address care quality. Those are other things that those ESTR funds continue to confuse for, as well as addressing mental health needs and educational challenges. Okay, on page seven, also in the narrative, is a little section about the new charter school, Mary Cadman. And so I'm going to jump back to the ideas behind a budget, the flexibility part. This is new and fast, new and fast when it comes to the planning of the dollars that are going to have to be exchanged, moved, allocated, spent on implementation and having a new charter school in the district. Okay, so there's a little bit of narrative there. But what I did add too, is the initial assumptions in the flow-through funding that will come through the district and flow to Mary, as well as the buyback services that the district will withhold for the merit agreement. Okay, all in all, the flow-through looks like about three point three million dollars coming into the district. But in there, the district will hold about seven hundred thousand dollars back for a variety of services. That will have to be adjusted. That's why I'm talking about flexibility. Because right now, it is so new and fresh that we're going to have to get into it. And those parties are going to have to work together really closely and collaborate honestly about, are these things really costing? What did we miss? What did we plan for? What did we miss? What did we plan for? Or where is, you know, we've got additional students, all that kind of stuff. It's really going to have to be discussed and adjusted for admitting budget condition. So things like per pupil funding, middle levy override, sales tax, but we're involved in the code to merit, as well as any IDEA money, which is special education money along with early childhood education money, get the talented money as well. Buyback services will include administrative oversight, because the finance department here will have to assist with data uploads for merit as well as liaison services around here as well. Special education oversight service, a lot of that still has to be figured out. But we have to try and put the dollars into it. So similar to a facility use agreement and charter contract, we have five per pupil dollars to lose. As well as preliminary facility use agreement upgrades to modify and improve the middle school facility to house merit. There's an estimate of one hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. Portions of the maintenance, utilities, technology, internet access and means will also be part of the buyback services. And then again, have to be evaluated for cost. And it is in the contract to be screwed up very quickly. So after year one, it's going to get a lot easier once we see what all of those, what all of those services are going to be. But that is a little bit of what we know is what's in the budget. You can't really see that stuff in just the general program lines of budget. So I want to make sure we do that. Take a look, let's jump to page nine. It has everybody, Board of Ed, Patterson, sorry, I have you on a tight side, I'll fix that. I'll place it online, so it's not everybody else's. And I will update Executive Director of Business Services and I don't know if we have this as a principal. We'll see if we can put in, so I'll update those things. So make sure I've got the email addresses correct, please. And then let's jump ahead to page thirteen. We already talked about pages ten, eleven, and twelve, the budget basis. So we'll go to thirteen. Again, here's a page I had to update with the corrective and accurate residential assessment rate of six point nine five percent. And that's under the pertinent constitutional provisions down there in the middle of the page. So that's just updated as well as it has new references to the Senate bills that impact property taxes and the changing assessment rates. So that's kind of the for your information and for the information to the reader, they want to dive in with the details. All right, page fourteen. Page fourteen has our projected asset valuation, middle levy count. I already mentioned we're going to proceed with the same asset valuation as an assumption to start this budget. And as we talked about last, last, or two weeks ago, we do have to add one mils to that general fund levy next year. To get it off to get us closer to that twenty seven point oh general fund levy. Overall, we expect the tax mils that the district levies next year to be just over twenty five. So you can add another six and a half to that, that's what it would have been had we not used bonds in the previous. There was a time when we were in the mid thirties and now it's still nice with the twenties as far as the mils that we're getting. Okay. Get more into the numbers a little bit. I'm not going to go line by line. But I'll just point out some, some interesting trends, some things to note. The far right column is the proposed budget. The column just to the left of that is our estimated actuals at the end of June of this year. The estimated actual or estimate, we'll really learn what those are at the end of the year, but like really truly in the fall after we go through the audit process and we clean up those. This is an interesting year in that the revenue looks a little bit understated, twenty two point one mil. And it looks understated because some of the accounting that will occur with the charter school is going to be in the form of what's called negative revenue. And so when we have the middle levy override, instead of it being an expenditure, and this is if the advice of our auditors, instead of it being on the expenditure side of the books, it's really a negative revenue. It's going to come right out of our property tax revenue and corporate tax. So we show that as a negative revenue. So you see charter school allocation MLO, negative one hundred fifty one thousand dollars. Similar, and that works similar to how we account for allocations to our sub-funds. Risk management, four hundred nineteen thousand dollars is a negative revenue. And the new fund that we're building capital projects on, that's a negative revenue, two million dollars. So this, there will be more money that comes in. Some of it gets redistributed to other funds and some goes to the charter school. That's what those negative revenues represent. Under state sources, you can see charter school stabilization as maybe almost three million dollars. That's that flow-through that I was just talking about. So as you're looking at that, that's the kind of needs, the negative revenue. So you're paging sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. I'm just going to point out a generality with these. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about. If you look at all these programs, instructional, special education, program for each to learn, so on and so forth, that span those three pages. Whenever you look at salaries and benefits, they're pretty significantly higher than the proposed budget than the estimated. And it was referred to in public comments, it's been referred to for a couple of weeks. Yeah, there's a pretty significant compensation package in this budget. So I'm going to get into that a little bit more. The other stuff like purchased services, supplies, property equipment, it's all pretty comparable. There are some increases based on the cost increases in fuel and things that we talked about previously. But really what we hadn't talked about is compensation. And that's the big driver in this part, this part of the expenditures of the general fund budget. But we spent about three quarters of what we do a year on staff. So what is that? So I'll direct your attention to this thing, because this is not detailed in the document itself. When we're talking merit inclusion, this is important. We've talked about the word recurring. That salary, once we build somebody's salary and it happens at that level or higher, we do that. Typically like to use recurring revenues to do this. And we really strive to make that merit inclusion means that that's going to count towards mine, anybody other staff members on the highest three to four years of salary throughout their career. When they retire, they're going to get a percentage of that number, that highest average salary for their pension. So it's important that when possible, we try to invest merit-inclusive salaries so that people can think down the road and think about that retirement. I started as a teacher, could care less. Yeah, I should have thought about that a little bit. But it's important now to make sure you're on topic. And what we're adding next year in merit-inclusive salaries, eight and a half percent salary increase to those making salaries, to those hourly wages, eight and a half percent. That's administrative, certified, classified. And I'll get to the base salary as well. That's true, that's true, especially on a budget that doesn't show recurring revenue. On top of that, for exempt, exempt staff, those are folks who are exempt from overtime rules. Teachers, those who are just roles, an additional twelve hundred dollars salary. Why the heck would you do that? That's a long conversation. But what that does, that keeps the highest end of the pay scale from getting too much separation from the lowest end of the pay scale. If all you under do is add percents, then those who may not work, then more and more. That's how it works. But the twelve hundred is a nice way to maintain some continuity throughout pay schedules and address issues, needs, hiring desire, especially beginning younger staff that are higher than mine, et cetera. After they just got a little. For non-exempt staff, non-exempt means those folks who are not exempt from overtime rules, they are going to have an additional seventy five cents added into their hourly rate. So everybody goes through their own salary and their calculations, they're doing that half, eight and a half percent plus seventy five cents. And then that's what their salary would be included for. Those are some pretty significant. For certified administrative, that's between about ten and not quite twelve percent increases. Classified, between about ten and a half and fourteen percent increases. All the way to the fact, if you like this. And our contracts all started different times. So then the new contract started with teachers slash ministerial, so that'd be more likely. Once after it started with this group. There is a component also, the retention and signing bonuses that have been discussed. This is not recurring salary, but this is additional compensation for next year. And that's an additional fifteen hundred dollars for those who sign, stay on, signing bonuses, et cetera. They were using growth or a one-time home in stores upon for those signing. So some folks, hopefully people standing to see fifteen, eighteen, nineteen percent increases in pay next year. Now, they're going to have to remember the following year that that fifteen hundred dollars is probably not fair. But those, that eight and a half percent and twelve hundred, that's added to that movement. What does that do? The base teacher salary in here is a big driver. We've talked for a long time and worked for a long, worked addressing retention and recruitment. And that takes our teaching base salary over forty thousand out pretty good. Why is that number not improving either? Because I like eight point five, five percent. Eight point four. So this is, so again, recruiting salaries, that's important. It's really how we judge a lot of this work. To raise a recruiting salary to that forty thousand mark is a very notable thing that the district has been trying to do for a lot of years. Now, it's difficult, and I know the question, well, what is everybody else doing? I couldn't tell you, but they're hot. Although, I mean, I know, it's an arms race. So we just keep trying to catch up and catch up and catch up. And we get a little bit ahead of them, or trying to get ahead. So what districts are doing, and this is kind of the how did we get to this? What districts are doing is they realize unexpected revenue gains during the pandemic. We're just like that. So districts like us are using those reserves, those gains from the other pandemic. We tightened it up. We say, we're not doing salary increase for a year. We're not spending on capital projects. And this is going to be an emergency situation. Things were better than expected and now we're turning that money around and forwarding it to the compensation. There's a lot of pluses and some minuses to that too. The pluses are, it's money right now, or over the next year, in the pockets of that. The recurring part of how we sustain that is going to be the challenge. As we look at the hiring wage for classified staff, we're bumping that up by a dollar to fourteen thirty two. And I feel pretty good, man, we still got a long ways to go competitively. That, this is an area that is really exposed in this part of the way we're doing. And if you talk to anybody looking for jobs, you've done any research, you know. People are making significantly more in those non-exempt roles. Now, we also offer a little over eight thousand dollars in benefits for health, medicine, life, et cetera. They are hard markets, so that's really more like almost forty nine thousand dollars behind the station. For that forty thousand dollars, we give it to you. That's really pretty good. That's good. We do have a really significant and strong debt. Okay, so how are we doing? I talked about the fund balance coming out of the pandemic. Additionally, pandemic funding has allowed us to use grant funds to offset things that we go typically out of the general fund this year and the previous year. We've got unfilled positions. We weren't able to staff this year too. So we had money allocated to staffing that we haven't been able to spend. It's kind of a strange problem. I don't pay anymore, still have that credit. So it's going to be a constant thing with recruiting and attracting. And so we have some money allocated for staff, it's going to be on staff, we're going to turn that, make sure it's going on staff. And we'll have a smaller report in the future too. So we have a smaller report. We're not spending on as many people, we're spending more. And that's how we got there with all the good news. Do I have a question? All right. Any of there, any of there, please. Melissa Barber, do you have anything in this process that you would speak out as counsel? It sounds like we'll do it in the right direction. Okay, we'll wrap up by just talking briefly about the other ones. I'm not going to go into a lot of details. But page nineteen is district management. Already talked about what it does. We've got a significant influx of insurance money for the band room playing with the middle school. And so that's why it looks like inflated carryover, inflated fund that we started in the next year. That money will get spent on ultimately that foundation. Those funds just arrived in the last couple of months. If we flip page twenty, that's our food service fund. We're happy to announce that we're doing our partnership with Charter Close Diet Services for five one-year contracts that are controlled. They've done a tremendous job, if you're unfamiliar with how they help navigate us through the pandemic, providing meals, staffing, feeding kids in the summertime, and they're lost. They're lost. And certainly that didn't go unnoticed as we reviewed the district came in for charter. So we decided to have them continue partnering with us and running our food service program. Next year also, we reindate with the National School of Health. We provided free meals for two years. And we can't do that anymore for the marketing factor. So we'll be back in the collecting, bring reduced price applications, charging for meals conversely. It's a kind of different animal, kind of act of normal. The grants we've talked about at different times, remember these are all for different business made purposes. The big ones are those ESTR grants, the federal grants. Again, those have to be spent, one of them by September of twenty three, that's ESTR two. And one of them by September of twenty four, that's ESTR three. Then that grand balance, that's, it was five point four million dollars this year. We're starting out four point two million dollars, we're starting to spend that down. And that will, that will start to, to wane a little bit more as well. But we're always going to have to be aware of and pursuing other grant opportunities. Grants run through page twenty four. And then you get into people activities, special revenue fund. That's the cash accounts for fundraising and fees at the schools, kind of like the school lunch program. Fees are coming back. Fees for the leakers in the science class, or whatever it is. We did, we used some one-time money to cover those fees this year for planning. So those are all from the back next year. Now, I continue to encourage and push our budget forward and our department heads, use the budget's money to cover expenditures forward, continue to assess. I would say that we impose a fee for the high-speed field trip, then we got to spend it on the high-speed field trip. That's the law. And so I go off of that. We've also prohibited any increases in fees for next year. Did not feel this the right time to increase fees. Did not feel it's the right time to increase fees in any way across the district. And it's not without a lot of farm wrestling with department heads, staff that particularly have not seen an increase in their department budgets to cover costs. And we've debated this, what, Brian, for three, four months now. Just do not feel it's the appropriate time to pass costs on to our families. That's not without sacrifice. That's not without staff having to do more with less, or more with the same, I guess. So we will have to address that the following year, as kind of a heads up to the board. As the economy does or does not do whatever it's gonna do, you have inflationary factors that do play into the cost of what we're providing to students. We are not gonna raise those rates for next year. It's important to remain, or remember, speaking of inflation, that we feel those effects about 18 months after whatever the inflationary period is. Right now, we're feeling 7, 8%, I don't know if it's 10, 12%, somewhere there. We won't see that turnaround in per people funding until the '23, '24 fiscal. Maybe in the funding formula, it counts for this year's inflation. And so we're trying to get ahead and address that now, as a lot of districts are. We'll see a little bit more coming for people, hopefully, for this year's inflation, though, as that changes a year and a half later, the per people rate of inflation.
So the student lunch programs, will they be affected by the group private income, the body of student lunch? That legislation?
I'm not sure which legislation.
I can chime in. Sue, I think you referred to the National School Lunch Program that the Department of Agriculture proposed a new regulation that basically attaches conditions to any school that accepts those funds. It's not a legislative legislation, but a rulemaking practice of the Agriculture Department. And it's been subject to various challenges from various states, but I do think it's an appropriate topic that we're gonna need to discuss in the board to get some of this information about, about when that would, you know, if those policies changed over, when they would be implemented on school districts and in what fashion. If that were to, because what they're trying to do is they're saying, if you're gonna accept money from the National School Lunch Program, you are going to have to adopt transgender-specific policies that basically require any, any staff member to arrest a student, or I guess another staff member, by their report form out. It's gonna require that basically you have to allow home to CSECs, and locker rooms, and bathrooms, and you can talk what gender identity they're currently subscribing to, part of the due rewards. I don't think anybody has seen a written rule from the Department of Agriculture that's gonna tell us what they're gonna be mandated, but they have expressed and made clear that something is going to happen. It will be a mandate attached to acceptance of this federal hunt. And so it's gonna be something that I think the board will have to discuss. Definitely understand how much money are we talking about, how many students can be affected, but federal government apparently intends to put conditions on the feeding of low-income children. And if we want to assist them in the cause of feeding them, then we're gonna do something else, wholly unrelated to this rule. So, but that's, that's something that's, I mean...
We will continue to monitor that and keep the board updated as we hear updates. None of this is, basically, those. All right, then, transportation, we will go back to, like, the transportation, bus speed next year. So that's, that's a one that's been changed, you know, that only generates about $20,000 in a total spend of about a million for transportation. And transportation expenditure, I'm not really, kind of the transportation fund, also the general fund. And then the base transit, the final fund, the big one I've talked about, the capital projects fund. This will be designed to implement the Silas Master Plan and start prioritize millions, millions of dollars of projects, and figure out what can be really afford, how we can address those. Starting off with a $2 million balance there, capital carryover. How many dollars gets spent in year one, it'll be there, they have a plan of maybe 7.5, 1.5, whatever it is each year, depending on the fiscal situation, it'll be added to the capital fund. So with that, you get to two resolutions. The first is a specific budget resolution. Resolutions mean take action on them to approve portions of the budget. The specific budget resolution designates fund balance or reserves to be spent in excess of the budget. Fund balance is extremely, extremely healthy, but, and so we're budgeting to spend the $1.4 million, $1,162,933 dollars of general fund fund balance on primarily that transfer of $2 million to the capital projects. So $2 million of that goes to the new capital projects fund. About $285,000 of reserves will go to those staffing considerations and bonuses. We talked about the reserves, sometimes plenty for those. Carrying over Medicaid-specific salaries and benefits. Any Medicaid reimbursements have to be spent on Medicaid. We think it's spent on salaries and benefits for other programs. Medicaid is money intended for the unveted health needs lawsuits. That's my first consent. The, there's an additional chunk in there, $340,000 allocated for curriculum review, implementation. Whenever you buy curriculum, make half curriculum, that one's the one on the, kind of next on the document. That's in there. Some technology equipment and other HR systems, legal expenses, elections, kinds of safety software, and carryover of our rural dollars that have been previously received and not yet spent, $158,000 are budgeted out of the reserve. So board members, as you're looking at the top half of that page above general fund, those are all general fund reserves. Below that, what you see is the fund balance allocation for each of the funds. The risk management fund, food service, the lack of the transportation and capital projects, which will be zero because of the salary. So it comes time for action. That would be one action item to approve use of reserves one or alling, and that won't be deducted from the spending. Sorry, the last page is the appropriation resolution. If I can show you what I'm doing. And that's what I showed you at the beginning. That's the total appropriations in the budget for each fund. The amount allocated to each fund, and includes all expenditure, all reserves, totaling $42,179,540. And to approve the budget and all those things I talked about, that's a, the appropriation resolution. No questions, going to answer.
Mr. Dusty. I had a couple. Sales tax. The portion that is going to Merritt Academy, is that, is that based on the, on the student count?
Yes, 314, 315.
Are you able to tell us how much does the city share sales tax for, just like they, they flex, sales tax, and then there's a percentage that comes from?
It's like flat fees, about $200, I think it's like $6,000, $7,000 a year.
You get a lot more sales tax revenue than this is now. So what I'm talking about is, what is, what is the percentage that the cities deduct from the state's 15% expense?
Literally a couple hundred dollars. The process, they simply process.
What is the resolution that was passed, that the voters passed, basically the portion of a certain percentage to our schools, right? So 1.09% of the schools.
Okay.
So 8% or 7.9% of the city, of course. I think our sales size, they went in on. That's, sorry, that's, that was your...
I was wondering what they're, they're...
Yeah, what percentage will be in, in, in 2028?
And that 1.09% is what was open. So if that allocation.
I, I had asked you a little while ago, so I was gonna ask if you had any more information on this, but I'm told that there is a potential grant or one-time only fund deal for districts with declining enrollment in the first year of authorized in charge school. Have you had a chance to get any more information on that?
Not solid information. I looked into it a little bit, read some about it, heard it doesn't apply to certain demographics of districts, and so I would gather that we need more information.
Okay, so more of it.
Yeah, so nothing is budgeted on that. I would encourage Merritt and the district to continue to work into that. Are there other grant funding opportunities? Because any grant funding opportunity can certainly offset, but either the WPSD, Merritt, general fund budget, but it's been an operation in the process.
And then the last question I want to ask you about was the raises, that, let's say, 8.5% or 10%, how does that compare to raises that have been approved by the district in the meantime?
So we've had, we were frozen for a merger, so this would be year seven. Not being frozen, but frozen here this, for the year, one. Say what that was, we were frozen that year. So we've had six increases in seven, totaling 29 and a half. So my time here, we've taken our base teacher salary from $30,225 to $40,000. But all of that was over really six years. So we had some pretty significant, and now 8.5, that's in one chunk, the biggest one. But coming out of when we were frozen in the very recession, we really addressed it, we're part of it, and bolstered those salaries.
I mean, is this the biggest, the biggest year-over-year increase that the district has seen in year nine?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, it's good. Well, I appreciate that. I didn't, I didn't want to comment on, on these raises because I had to recall Eric Brevetto raising that in the April meeting. When we first started talking about, you know, the budget cycle that was coming up, and I believe Mr. Brevetto threw a number about 7% or 7.5% of the number that he was at.
7,000, that was, it's 7,000.
And so I remember that many of us heckled that. I know I certainly am. A slogan on one of my signs was empowering parents who support the youth. And I'm pleased that Addict's Choice of Merritt Academy are the first part of that. And these are K raises for our teachers, so they can obtain them to improve them, is the other part of that. And so I'm very pleased that with your help, Brian, with your working with the WPA, with the process, and with careful work done by other leaders in the administration, like Dr. Dino, that I'm truly able to put together a process and budget like this that includes what I, what I see as a distorted raise, a well-deserved raise. And so I'm sure Mr. Brevetto would be pleased by this, and I'm very excited that we are gonna have an opportunity here to cast this budget resolution, and we think it's paid for, so, okay? I'll just say, many thanks to the VPA for process, which I was a part of for many years, for working collaboratively on. Even those times, I had to sit in those rooms, I had this paper frozen. Paper frozen, oh yeah, it's year four, being frozen. And a lot of folks in here can relate, I can relate. So yeah, those are hard, hard times. So those have stuck it out. Certainly a nice, a nice reward for next year, and thanks for that collaboration, working together on it. Right? We did that this week, so we're excited about that issue. Is anybody else having any other questions, Mr. Dusty? David, are you able to still hear us? I think David can hear us, but I'm not sure that he's in a place where he can. David's right, I think we don't have a resolution. Okay, well, the mystery.
We all can hear you there.
We can all hear you, thank you.
Do I have a motion to accept the presentation?
So move.
Up second.
Second.
Accepting the motion, and they clarified the motion to, to approve.
Do they find the right motion?
Yes. So do I have a specific motion to approve specific budget resolution number one? So move.
Second.
Thank you for clarifying. Will call please.
Austin.
Aye.
Killian.
Aye.
Patterson. Aye. Russell.
Aye.
Can I have the second one? Our incorporated issues. Yeah, so David, next on the agenda is the adoption of the final budget appropriation resolution 2022 to 2023. And would we find to adopt that resolution, or can we read it out loud before we make such a motion? Okay, I'm being single. You do not have to read the entire thing out loud, you're much appreciated. So David, are you fine moving on to the next agenda item? So not hearing any info from David, I'm gonna ask, do we have a motion to approve the adoption of final budget appropriation resolution 2023? That is on the agenda. So move.
Thank you.
Will call please.
Austin.
Aye.
Patterson. Aye. Russell.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, our final agenda, item this evening, is to appoint a member to the Board of Education. I'd just like to say, we had a very good group of eight people, cut it down to seven. That came to us Saturday morning. We interviewed them. I was very impressed with the people who, who we interviewed. But before I make any more comments, I would like to alter this up to the board to discussion and hear from each of the directors their thoughts on moving forward and their thoughts on the interview.
All right, so I have to ask Chris to go first because Chris is the only one who's already done this before, you know, through the process. You were part of the process, so you're looking to look at board members. So would you, would you just honor this?
Yeah, sure, thank you. So the last few times that I've been a part of the process. Um, so the last few times that I've been a part of the process, a lot more real time discussion. I know that was not on the agenda, but this last Saturday, Monday, Thursday. Yeah, it was kind of unfortunate in the sense that we did not actually before discuss each candidate. Um, collectively, we have, we are allowed to do our own impressions. And, um, and so, I, I would just say that that was something that was different. And I would also say that I agree with you, sir, that candidates who did put their name in the hat, allowed themselves to be interviewed. But just, um, there's no, I've been like, really, actually, really stellar. And I appreciated the opportunity. So, here, not only there is opinions for their parts, as they were answering the questions. Um, so, yeah, um, that being said, I, I actually wanted to just clarify for everyone, and maybe Mr. Russell, or if you can, help clarify just the process here. Uh, there are four of us who would vote, who would point, and if there's a tie or if there's no way for us to figure out who the, who would point tonight by vote, then that would extend out, and we have the opportunity to extend this process. Is that correct?
That's correct. And so, right now, you're just doing opening remarks. Um, the board would need to go into an action, um, to actually move down that road, uh, of, uh, actually discussing the candidates. If you, if you then had a vote that was a two-two split, um, that would be a non, um, non-binary decision that, that, uh, the president and with that, then be left to a point. Um, you could come back and actually re-vote at a later date if you wanted to clarify any information or clarify any discussion. Um, Kelly, would you mind confirming the last date of the board's potential discussion before the, to twenty-fourth? So, without a decision tonight, you would have until the twenty-fourth of the month to do another round, uh, another discussion, a retreat, you know, of candidates again, or however you would choose to do this.
And then, that, that played into the fact that we have a scheduled session on, but I hear special working.
Correct.
On June twenty-second. We could, we couldn't move this out to where if we found ourselves in a place, and I, we wanted more time. Um, I actually would be curious to hear what some of the other directors, the group related to timing and pace on this. Ready to move tonight, or do we have a conversation we haven't had? So, I'll just refer to you and your show.
I have a question, Director Austin, when you, you said you were disappointed with the, um, the, uh, in a way, how, uh, the process went on Saturday. And you said that we didn't have a chance to discuss the board, like, how to, you know, to, you know, opinions. Can I have a question about what your experience during the last appointment? Since we are under the open meeting laws, were those discussions about the closing times of each meeting um, open during our public meeting?
Yes, they were.
So, you, you thought, okay, we'll discuss in what you like, or you didn't?
Well, probably what we discussed more than anything was what rose to the top as far as, um, that candidate's contribution to the team. And that was something that we, that definitely remained positive. And I would say that, um, that we did that after every interview. And we gave ourselves a little bit of time between candidates to actually have that conversation. And it may have only been five, ten, fifteen minutes. It was something that we were, while we were fresh, speaking about it, and who knows? We were able to receive from each other what kind of rose to the surface through this candidate. And so, we did that in more than real time as the candidates got where we are. So, that's how I feel.
And frankly, I might wrong, Chris, but although those were open meetings, it wasn't a Republican intent, is that right?
That's correct.
So, a little more free space, um, to discuss without feeling that you're gonna say something that's gonna offend somebody with threats. Right.
Yeah, and the, and the reality is, like, there's certain laws that relate to process and timelines. But it's to the discretion of the board how they were going to, you know, implement the process. And with that particular series of, of on-teams, that's how we implemented the process. I'm not saying it was right or wrong, it was just different. And my only disappointment was that I wasn't able to hear from each other, um, in more real time. We haven't actually had a conversation. So, that was the only disappointment, as you said, we weren't able to glean reflections from each other.
Would you say otherwise, though, Chris, that, um, the process so far has been consistent with what is done in the past?
Well, I would say the only other difference was that we had questions that the board had approved to ask each candidate and that we did not deviate from those. Um, and the board knew what those questions were. In this particular round, uh, particular, that they're dealing with, brought questions in addition to the, the ones that we were asking each candidate. Now, to your credit, you asked the same questions as the candidate. We did that, we, like, all of us. And so, um, that was the only other variation and quite frankly, a little bit of a surprise. It's, yeah.
All right, and we discussed on Saturday, though, why I thought that actually was what we were supposed to do. Uh, in a previous conversation where we got in public and, um, it sounds like you and I both took a sort of different, uh, interpretation of what would be, who would have been. But, um, I would say, we did not, um, before, approve any questions, Chris. Would you guys, the board, previously in your experience, actually have an action item where questions were?
No, I wouldn't say it was an action item that was more of a consensus based on emails that would come to look before, just like email that came to all of us. Although, I believe you're saying that you didn't receive that.
No, I don't think I did. And then, I, I would have been extremely cautious about the idea that that, you know, if it ended up in my, others. If I responded back to it, I would, and involving the directors, it could have become something that would be a violation of the, uh, original law. And I think we're all aware, um, the other man just before, currently has a certain programming function, requirements and quality of the new thing. So, I, I'd probably be extremely cautious, uh, for something like that. So, I guess I would say that whether I received it or not, it was in particular, which I thought, I'm not sure, hey, I could have responded to this in a, in a special, with the board members, or, you know.
Yeah, and I, um, I would find it strange. And I believe, I recall, you know, it was something that, it was an invitation and and request to receive additional questions for conversation. Um, perhaps, you know, I believe, you know, I, I don't believe any of this other question, except for maybe Director Russell, who submitted some additional questions that he didn't have. And so, yeah, that, that's how, right.
Hello, I want to clarify, Will call please, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a placement, position, not an elected position, not a particular one. Or elected, someone appointed, such as this one.
Members of the board, if you chose to enter into discussion about specific candidates right now, um, I would recommend a motion to go into that rather than right now with the just discussing process, which I, which I think is great. Um, but if you go into discussing candidates, I think we would move forward on the action item for that discussion. That action item may end up not being a vote season. Um, but the preamble or the, um, the dialogue you're having now is great. Okay, uh, David, did you have something you wanted to add down there?
Yes, I do. Um, I would be willing to enter into dialogue right now. Our item agenda does say to appoint a member to the board. And I would say that by appointing it naturally to follow that would be that we would have discussion about the strengths of the candidates that, uh, we would be in favor of appointing to taking a vote after discussion. So, I, is a, um, motion to, for discussion necessary or just a natural part of the appointing process? Is my question.
Well, it isn't necessary. I don't think it could do any harm. So, um, if, if you like to discuss it, I think we'd like to discuss. So, since it can't hurt us in any way, I would, uh, move that we discuss, um, potentially appointing, uh, a member to the Board of Education from the candidates who submitted their names for consideration.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Will call.
Aye.
Aye.
David, you wanna lead us off on that discussion?
Sure. It's, um, kind of, we have some odd phone service right now, but I hope you can hear me. Um.
We can hear you just fine.
Okay, thank you for confirming that. I was, I, I want to repeat, I was very impressed with the people who came and, uh, interviewed with us. I saw the strengths and the, the strengths in each one of them. And each person brought just a very unique, a part of them. Everyone had a passion for the school, for the kids. I, I heard, I remember hearing that everyone's saying, no, it has to be the children first. The other thing that I heard ringing out was policy. And, um, a, a need to, to follow through on, on policy and that, uh, taking bold moves. After considering it and, and going through this quite, quite a bit and going over my notes, um, there were three candidates to me that rose to the top. And, uh, I feel kind of uncomfortable mentioning names, but, um, so I'm gonna hold back on names this time, but, um, some of the strengths that people brought were about security for our schools, which is vital today. And experiences with that and moving forward with the security. Um, unfortunately, I don't have all my notes here with me, so I'm, I'm reaching back here. One of the things that I was concerned about is that we would get, we would appoint someone who would help, who could work together with such a, shall I say, energetic diverse board. At least, very energetic. Who would fit in and work well together with us? There, there is a sense among some of our community members that there is, uh, a fracturing that certainly happened. And is there somebody that we could bring to the board that would help with that? With, um, one of the things that I was considering is, um, you know, a, a parent's perspective. I wanted to hear from somebody who has children in the school, who, um, or who has children who are coming into the school. So, I would really value a parent's perspective on, on all of this. Someone who can also bring to this, um, maybe a middle, a more of a middle ground. And those were the things that I was considering very strongly.
Correct.
So, uh, I'll pass that on to someone else right now and reserve further comment later. Could, could everybody hear that?
Yeah, we got you on that.
Okay. So, someone else's turn.
Um, at some point, we will have to name a name and get discussed.
All right, well, do you want me to, shall I name the three that did, or two, two that stuck out the most to me? Um, although, I, I did appreciate, I, I really thought, um, I liked Carol, Carol Hartman. I liked, uh, Cassie, uh, Kimbrel. And I liked Dawn, um, what is Dawn's last name?
Zalison.
I don't have my notes here, so I apologize for that. Those were the three that rose to the top for me. Um, I like the tempered, uh, middle ground, the, the thoughtful approach that, um, Cassie Kimbrel had. And I think for me, that she is the candidate that rose to the top.
So, uh, David, I'll, I'll jump in because I think Sue and I, Chris are all moving away from each other, waiting for somebody. I know this, uh, and to say nothing about seventy or eighty people here in the room that are waiting. Um, I, I gotta say, I don't want to, um, name names specifically. Um, it's really awkward, it feels really rude to me, uh, not to say that.
Oh, sure.
No, 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 I'm not throwing you in the bus. Matthew, you don't need to ask him. At some point, a name has to arise to a discussion. And then, a motion will have to be made to discuss justice in way that person.
No, I'm sorry, I don't try to decide, you know. What I want to say is that, uh, I've always appreciated, um, everybody who, uh, took their time to apply, took their time to come in and ask questions and, um, and I, I had some very sort of direct questions I, I put to each candidate. Um, and I appreciate everybody who took the time to, uh, answer those. And I, I felt like we got a really, um, really honest answer from everybody. I really appreciate that everybody came in and, you know, laid it on the line about, uh, what they believe in, uh, what they want to accomplish. Um, some of them made clear, um, that there were things that about before they wanted to see change. And there were others that came and said that, uh, they supported, um, the things that we were doing and wanted to help, um, continue to support us. So, I can appreciate, um, how everybody had very different viewpoints, but they were all more bright about those things. I will say that, for consideration for me, is that we are replacing, um, Mr. Brevetto. He was elected in the election, running at the site with Sue and David did not. And, uh, we all ran on commitment to certain philosophies and ideals, or commitment to certain policies. And so, I think that that is key to me, is that having one, Gary's replacement to be somebody who likewise admitted to the ideals that I ran, uh, to implement. So, I'm not interested in appointing a member who basically sees their job as stopping and overturning the results of the last election. He wants to stop the implementation of reforms that Sue and David and I ran, uh, put into place. And some of those things are reversing, um, previous decisions. And that's just the way it is, that's the way elections work. And maybe the way the next election works. Um, and maybe decisions that we've made will lead to us becoming re-elected. Somebody else can run in and make those changes. And that's the beauty of democracy, or the beauty of people having, uh, the wisdom of hope. And, um, you know, no one can say, uh, that our board meetings are, um, less important or less noticed, um, since the election. And whether you agree or disagree, uh, with myself and my fellow elected directors, um, obviously, public interest has been elevated and sustained with the work, uh, the Golden Park Schoolwork. And that is to everyone's benefit. And always presented to the community to have people involved in their governments, involved in their elections. Involved, um, like in the appointment here, I believe. Um, and, um, I believe we had about eight people apply, and that would probably be largest number of applications, um, for any of the vacancies that the school were seeing in the past several years. Uh, y'all didn't have any numbers like that, um, from your experience, right, Chris? And so, and that goes to what I'm talking about, that we, we have people, whether they, um, support, uh, the working of the board, whether they want to change the working of the board. Uh, they are involved and they are willing to step forward and all of them deserve to be permitted for that. Um, and so, there were several candidates, uh, who I liked more than others. Um, and, uh, I am prepared, um, when the time is right, to make a motion for the one who, um, I, to be my number one preferred choice. Um, I'll, I'll say that, um, it was very. I'll say that it was very close between for meeting number one and number two. There was another candidate who I would, who also was in the top three. But number one, there were two candidates who stood out by far the most to me. And it was very hard for myself to make a decision between them. Of course, when the time is right, I will make a motion for that particular number one candidate. But there were two who I could vote for readily. And those are, those are the two candidates who I thought best represented that they believed in the mission of this board the same way I see it. And that they are ready to join with us, to work together, to move conservative reforms and transparency and oversight forward. I'll turn it over to Sue or Chris, who I'd like to go next.
Dr. Russell Holt and Eli Moore have pretty much said all. And I have to say as well, through candidates, we can stand out for being well. I'm, I'm established that all the candidate community was very important to them. And the students, putting the students first. But as Director Eli Moore stated, we have to make this conscious decision with our conscience to appoint a director that we feel aligns our vision. And I plan to do that too.
So the big question for me is, who's the best fit for our team? And who would, who will go towards betterment? And so I am actually, it's interesting, Mr. Russell Holt, I actually had those two that remain revised to the top for me. So, no, it's just the experience that we're sharing together. And I think the big question for me has to do with, who's the best fit for our team? Who's going to help us with building up our history, those who remain, what they're going to do. Actually find, but the measure of engagement that we are and have over the last six months been pressing to do and through. To surprise, I mean, we can call it energetic, we can call it actually ambitious, we can call it all sorts of things. Admittedly, for all of us, it requires something else. And it's required not only a tremendous amount of time. It's also required a tremendous amount of aggression. And it's been for many of us, maybe more than some, it's been quite emotional actually. And by that, I mean, it's just, it's required a lot of our intellectual, I believe, to just really press into big questions and make really important decisions. And so for me, part of the filter then for me is regarding that measure of roomful, understanding the complexity of the board and pressing into. The one that rises up for me then would be related to who has, from my limited perspective, again, very limited, I'd happen out of both, read the answers to the question. One of the dynamics in here that has to do with capacity. Well, it feels unfair to be able to judge someone's capacity based on a limited glimpse into their life. No doubt that every single candidate has a desire to engage, otherwise they would not put any心思. So for me, you know, Carol Hartman seems like, A, she has a lot of experience working with pretty high horsepower groups, making big decisions that impact a lot of people. Since she has capacity to engage at the level that they require in this group. And so I would say that of the two that rose to the top, Cassie Kimbrel and Carol Kimbrel, I would say that Carol seems like the best it might be.
Members of the board, I don't know if it's within your authority to add two positions, but it sounds like two candidates rose to the top. A little bit facetious in my statement.
Well, if we're ready, unless anybody has any other discussion they want to add, I am prepared to make a motion for a vote on one candidate, who we might have one candidate. David, is that prepared to you?
Yes, yes, everything was kind of in order. I pretty much have done this every day. I've heard those, Chris said, and her miles. So yes, if you would like to make a motion, please make a motion.
Okay, so I would move that the Board of Education vote to appoint to Gary Rabetto's vacancy in District D, Cassandra Kimbrel. Go ahead, please.
Eli Moore?
Aye.
Josh from the side. Russell Holt.
David Russell Holt, I do need your vote on the motion for approval to approve Cassandra Kimbrel.
Aye.
Can you say it again, please?
Aye. Can you hear me?
Yes, again. Motion carries. I congratulate you guys. Congratulations to the other candidate. Over the next few days, we will find time, as in, it's a point. This is not the same as a elected position as far as the process. So we don't actually have it notarized. It can be done within our office by Mr. Russell Holt. And so we'll try to find a time over the next couple of days to do that. Should she be available and ready to do that. And would be most likely joining us then, again, depending on her schedule, the night of the 22nd, which is a special, special meeting that will have an agenda announced next Friday. Very small items on the next agenda on the 22nd, as until last year's end of the year. So are we ready to move on to the superdign board? Unless there's anything else by council or by, by Ms. Haven, or if we have to do a different. You get that first? Yep. Mr. Russell Holt, are you still in line? Do we still have him?
Hi, we lost you because we couldn't get you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Are you ready to go back home? Okay, I just have two things real quick. Thank you for the, to the board for the exciting session before this. And I know we ended quickly, beginning right into this conversation. Good feedback, great ideas, great things with the five member board in the next few weeks. We have some really great, great work to do. And looking forward to getting to know our new board member, kind of congealing and coming together as a team during the month of June, July. Cassie would be a great addition. Just real quick, I got a report today on our social media for the year. And it's, it's without wonder, and we talked a little bit about this, that we have improved or increased the numbers of people that are connected to us by over thirty percent this year. And so those are families that are joining in to, all the elementary schools have added Facebook pages and Instagram pages. And so the staff have made a really strong effort. Yvonne's in the room, Katie's in the room, there's another principal that I'm not seeing. But with our Public Information Officer being added, really adding thirty, over thirty-three percent of our kind of people that watch us and follow us. On the fun stuff, right, the good features of kids and the great things that are doing, it's a pretty tremendous effort of the village, of WPSD to kind of accomplish that. We have an average between six and seven thousand engagements now every month. And that was up from about seven hundred. So we are not only added folks, but we are, and again, our Facebook page is really just the great stuff that kids are doing. There's not a lot of announcements out there. There's not a lot of information. The goal is to get families to see the good stuff of what's happening. And then in total this year, we had two hundred and seventeen thousand images or pictures of great stuff that was happening. So you don't get two hundred and seventeen thousand impressions without a whole lot of effort from a whole lot of folks. And so all of the, I mean, Yvonne's team has put in five, six, seven posts a day sometimes. Each post they have three, four, or five pictures. So she's at thirty, or forty, or fifty pictures of great stuff happening. And I would contrast that to previous years where maybe that wasn't a focus. And so kudos to our team and the effort. My team, teachers get tired of the pictures, I'm sure. People get tired of the folks in our classrooms. But it's really great to stay at the end of the year and feel like we have communicated better this year than maybe what we have been able to do in the past. So congratulations to staff on that effort. And for those of you that are on their laps, I see foot flops and baseball caps and everybody ready to start summer, thank you for your dedication to the district and joining us for tonight's meeting.
So we're on the board reports. Do we have any stateless finding directors? Those from Chris and Sue.
Well, I was actually, no, not a no. I just don't have a board. I just have an expression of gratitude. As I'm through a lot this year, as staff, as educators, as administrators. And so I want to thank you. I personally want to thank you for enduring a difficult year and a series of difficulties. And you've done it with a class, you've done it with, like sincerely. Yeah, there have been heated moments in public conversations and any public comment. But I would say that that's actually part of the real magic that makes this district what it is. And that is people, and sincerely I'm saying this, if you feel safe, then please succeed. And by safe, I mean breathe deep in one, in a culture where you can be heard. And so I want to express gratitude to all of you who share your thoughts, your thoughts. But also not just to this board, but to administration, to your students. And so I want to just express that.
If I could jump in and say the last word for David. I also echo and appreciate what you say there, Chris. No doubt that as far as the school district and this board are concerned, this has been a really big, it's actually like a big hat here. The amount of work that has been done. Of what Mr. Wright said about giving hope to children. And that's true of everybody. Everybody needs hope. And when I see that we got a charter school approved in the district and we are able to provide a well-deserved historic raise to our teachers and our counselors and all the, all the people who've worked so hard to support the mission of the Willem Park School District. Everybody, and I'm so pleased that that raise covers everybody. That's not a raise only for a particular type of job, a particular type of money. That's a raise from top to bottom. And that's tremendous. And that reflects on, and plus credit, on the work of the people who really went into crafting that budget and making that a priority. And so I have great hope for the future. This school district is a wonderful way to close our school year with everybody able to go and enjoy their vacations, you know, try and recuperate from that. You know, teacher tired, praise I just heard tonight. I think that's, I think that is fantastic. The only thing I want to add is in relation to talking with all the candidates on Saturday, two things that are really beneficial, I mean, yeah, that discussion. There's several candidates talked about. One, I wanted, I'm going to say this was Miss Moll, and I hope I'm crediting the right person. Talking about the desire that we can get more attention, like from the Pikes Peak Courier or something about the work that our students do, like our plays. And, you know, not just exploring events, but all the tremendous things are horrendous things and things like that. That is something that I am happy to review with this form of value. I would love to see more focus on our kids and their growth and development and their accomplishments. And the other thing I would say, other side of the board is that especially many candidates, appropriately so, about school safety. That's a bit on what you were saying. You were using more like a First Amendment kind of contest. But I would encourage, now that we have a board, I think the board, find time, no better time than this summer. We have a discussion about how we can review and look to improve the safety of our schools, our staff, and our students. It could be wonderful to hear from our local law enforcement professionals. Any sort of experts might have insight ahead. And so we asked a wonderful discussion with some candidates about that as well. I share the belief that we, perhaps we can do more, we can do more, but we must do more. So, but thank you to everyone who made this school year such a great success for the students of the Willem Park School District. Thank you from the bottom of my heart and congratulations to you all. Completed another great school year. And we look forward to doing it again next year, bigger and better than ever. So thank you for your time. I'll turn it over to President Russell Holt to get his comments.
I would like to say, Chris, and David, we have amazing staff. I've learned so much this year. I've learned that people work even at their absolute best in professionalism when they don't agree with the process and so on forward. You would never know at a public meeting or talk that the level of commitment to doing the best for our kids, for doing the best for our district. I have seen dedication to levels that I'm just thoroughly impressed with. I, I, Sue, I'm so thankful that we were able to give our teachers the historical breaks. And I heard tonight from Dr. Neal that if you take the past five years races and add those all together, our teachers are getting in excess of that amount. And I'm so, so happy with that stat. And hopefully we can keep that trend moving that way in the future. Another thing that I am very happy to be working. Another thing that I am very happy to be working with, uh, eight poets and, um, trying to fix this fracture as much as possible. It's a personal role of mine, but we will keep communications open and trying peaceful ways forward for all of us. The last thing I keep saying, and because I say it to myself all the time, we need to work towards bringing our community together. It was a matter of sizes, whether it's fifty-fifty or twenty-eighty. Let's set an example here in Woodland Park. To all the fractured school districts across the nation, we can find a peaceful way forward. If we choose to not be offended, to understand other people's fears and help overcome them, standing beside each other, that we choose to forgive quickly, and that we find that peaceful way forward. I am committed to it. I'm willing to stand with everybody, walk with people who are willing, or not willing. But we, we are better than this. We're on top of the world, one of the highest school districts in the nation. Let's set that example, let's be that beacon on the hill. Then we will find a way forward for our community, for our parents, but first and foremost, for the kids. And we are all here for the education and the safety of our, our children. So thank you very much, thank you for being here tonight. And, uh, I'm sorry that I couldn't been there with you. So, uh, I will hand this back over to either David or to, uh, Dr. Neal for a second.
I think we just need a motion to adjourn. So, do we have a second? And Rollon, please.